...that mess and trying to find a way for us to end with a balanced budget. So it's pretty unorthodox. The other option would have been for us to not have a balanced budget again. And we actually put a call into the state to see if there was any way we could get some sort of waiver or dispensation so that we could do it again. Because we don't have $500,000 to pay for the mistakes that happened that compounded over the years leading up to this. So, does that help at all? Do you understand a little bit about why the budget looks so much different?
The other option was not do it this way and take three more years to balance it out, to balance all those mistakes out. So, rather than take three more years, it was felt that it would be better to start clean this year in June, in this year's budget and reconcile all those mistakes hopefully than to take three more years to try and reconcile those mistakes. Does that sound like it?
Yes. Well, that's my guess.
I think the misinterpretation, what Dawn was trying to tell you was, when Gordon moved money left, right, and center from different accounts without going through the loan process or legal processes, he used that as an excuse to acquire the bond. Now, what I've just heard, me also, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Shaw, it was...
Excuse me, but what bond did you have?
Well, the bond that we...
Gordon's bond.
Gordon's bond. What we've actually said is that because of what he had done, we are entitled to a bond. Now, you've just said in your first comment a few minutes ago that the figures from the first budget were pie in the sky. And I'm sitting here thinking, so you're now doing a budget supplementary on pie in the sky figures?
No.
And, and people have looked at the supplementary the moment it came out. There are certain things that just aren't right. And what I'm hearing is you all saying, well, it doesn't look right, and it doesn't look right. But if you're saying that, what you are doing is saying it's all right for us to do it, but it wasn't all right for Gordon to do it. And that's where I think you misconstrued Dawn's comment about insurance company...
She was talking about the underfunded loans, wasn't she?
She was explaining to you, but what she was trying to explain to you was, if it's okay for Gordon to do what he did and we go and claim the bond or go to insurance company, then what it seems to us on this side of the things is, you're doing exactly the same thing, but transparent. So how would the insurance company look at it? That's what we're trying to explain.
The difference is, number one, we've got three years of audits, two years of audits. This came out of the audit show, this stuff came out of the audit stuff. At least that's what I'm told. Now, if, I think you're confusing interfund loans and fund transfers, two different things altogether. You can transfer money all over the place.
Why were we told for years that we couldn't then?
Yes, you can.
But we were told for years that we couldn't, you can't move money from one fund to another.
You have to have a resolution, for instance. For instance, we've got to have a resolution for the supplement for the secret millionaire money, as a for example. Any money that comes in can go in the bank, but can't be spent until you have a resolution. Well, that's secret, that's the secret, that's all the revenue. Actually, a secret millionaire was one part of the revenue that came in in various pieces. And I suppose Susan addressed us when she used to reply to you before. Gordon circumvented that. He just bought the money. The difference, there's a lot of difference between now and then. The difference being is now we got money in the bank, then we didn't have money in the bank. And I suppose when we get the financial report, find out how much money we got in the bank. There's a big difference there. And remember, a budget is a budget. It's a map. It's a wild guess. And even the one we do for next year is a wild guess based on the best information we have available.
Why, why did we spend so much money in the last year and a half to two years to figure out where we were, where we really, really were financially? If we could have just sat down two years ago and said, well, how much money do we have in the bank? Why don't we put this much in the general and this much in EMS and this much here and this much there?
And then have like...
And move forward from there and just forget about all this time that we've wasted trying to figure out where we really are.
Because we didn't have the money to do it. We didn't have the money in the bank.
We've somehow managed to spend about $200,000 on learning what we did wrong.
You know what? I think, I think Council or, what was your name again? Makes a good point. We are going to have a budget hearing next. Rather than take up all night tonight on this, maybe that would be a more appropriate place to discuss it. And then you can bring questions prior to that meeting into Louie or he can show you how he arrived at his figures or whatever. And then we can have a discussion on it then.
Okay.
Then we'll just take up the whole evening because that's all we're doing anyway. That next week is the budget hearing. And thank you, Dawn, I appreciate it. Anybody, someone, what else, where are we at? City reporter. Oh, city administrators. Oh, you're done, city administrator?
I'm done.
Okay. City finance, city reporter.
My mind's going to be short and sweet. I was working on, I've been on the phone with the CIST, working on an accounts receivable issue and then getting the 7.2 done. I don't have a financial report to give to you and I apologize. I just was busy doing some other things and completely skipped my mind that I needed to put that together. The funds are basically dollar wise, we're sitting somewhere the same way as we were at the beginning of the month. There hasn't been any major, any major spending done, just simple things. But I didn't have a chance to call all those figures together, I apologize for that.
So we will get that in our, in our board, in our...
Yeah, I will do it tomorrow and, nope, I will do it Monday. I am off tomorrow, but I'll do it Monday and I'll have it in your boxes for you on Monday.
Is that right?
Okay. You got anything else, Susan?
One of the things that you're going to see in your packet that ties into the financial report is, leaning back, you see a letter where people were talking about different ideas for the use of the additional secret millionaire money. So, I would like some direction from Council on how you want to handle that as far as getting some input feedback from different groups and to citizens on ideas. You know, I know that the city has some ideas on how to use it and I just need some direction if you want to get input from the citizens so that you guys can do a review later or whatever you want to do.
And I'm assuming we're going to be looking at some resolutions next week at the public hearing?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Because right now we've got the money in the bank that we can't spend.
Oh, no, no, on the secret millionaire, you did a resolution already. So that, that was covered, yes. Now, one of the biggest changes in the budget was not having the library and that 440,000. But as far as the secret millionaire money, yeah, you did resolutions last year.
All righty.
I just need direction on how you want us to handle that, to put something out in the paper and ask folks to give us ideas or what would you like to do, do nothing? Yeah, 111,000 give or take dollars.
Well, Mr. Mayor, already have we discussed using part of that to pay for the chipper program and for junk amnesty? Do we have to spend this money right now?
No.
Can we keep it?
Yes.
In like a contingency to use for projects that come up?
Yes.
I would rather do that than just, yeah, further away on whatever. I mean, we have things that may come up that we may need that money.
Is that the wish of the council?
Let's counsel one.
Mission high yield bond.
Some ladies have a financial... I think we should think about maybe coming up with some ideas for how we would want to spend that or, you know, if we just say we're going to put it aside, we don't have anything in place to help us decide what we are going to use it for, maybe we should put some rules on it as well. You know, we're going to set this aside and we're going to, we're going to use it for, you know, projects that benefit the community.
The community, right.
And what exactly do you want to use?
Can't we make a contingency fund that is just basically that? That the money would be used only for things that would benefit the entire community, like the chipper program and the junk amnesty? I'm sure there's other things that would fit into that same category. Can we use it, make a contingency?
Brand match.
Or, or brand, sure.
For something that's going to benefit the whole community.
And we probably should ask for community suggestions. I mean, why not?
We might consider it's just kind of letting it sit until the strategic plan is done, which is going down. It's fewer to community, it's going down for the city ahead and maybe have a little money to...
I'm just saying that I don't think we need to spend it all right now. I agree.
Plus, I mean, I don't know how all the rest of committees are, but in our committee, we've come a couple of ways to spend money and, you know, eventually they're ready, we'll be put in a form that everybody can go on, you know, they have a more resolute appearance to it. So, I would imagine the other committees are doing the same thing, so it would be nice to have some kind of a fund around. So, what I'm hearing, we won't designate it for a specific project, but this time we'll keep a hold of it. Doesn't mean we can't spend it if a project comes along.
That's correct.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Majority of it will stay in there for the, until the strategic plan is done.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Point Parks, Trails, Trees Committee members. You have in your packet, you have the names of the committee members.
Mayor, Council, as you will see, it's, it's, it should be both, but basically they reapply for the Parks, Trails, and Trees Committee and you have one person that dropped off. However, I believe she is reconsidering, so you'll probably, is she reconsidering? Not really, oh, disregard, never mind. So, so they're going to be shy one person for now and if, and we could re-advertise one more time, I mean, I can see if we can get another person. So, but Mr. Lukachek and Mr. Brown are, have been on the committee in the past and wish to stay on.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint John Lukachek and Keith Brown to serve in the vacant Parks, Trees, and Trails Committee positions for a term of three years.
Moved by Council, by Council, by Council, by Council, to appoint Keith Brown, Lukachek for three years, did you say? No, three years. If there is a...
I would say go ahead and put it for a short arm, go ahead and put it back out again.
Is that the wish of the council?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, vote.
Counselor Biggerstaff?
Aye.
Mayor Shory?
Aye.
Counselor Slaven?
Aye.
Counselor Fortune?
Aye.
Counselor Coe?
Aye.
Counselor Basler?
Aye.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Motion, Chris. All righty, moving along with communities. Can we move the bicycle program up to community services? It's all business, but, Mr. Carl, has been your way to present some information on that program?
Sure. My name's Gary Carl and, oh, I don't know, six months ago, I had the idea of marrying the city's excess bicycles to the mercantile's offer to rehabilitate the bicycles and putting them out for public use. And I seemed like a really good idea until somebody said, what about liability? How are you going to get the bicycle back? What about helmets? And as I looked into those issues and talked with some knowledgeable people in the community, it quickly became apparent that it wasn't such a good idea after all. And so I pretty much gave it up. And then Kristen Dahl from Travel Oregon put me in touch with somebody who does this professionally in Portland, and I forget the guy's name, Bert Cal. You guys know Bert Cal? Yeah. And he called me up and he said, well, you know, in Fort Collins, Colorado, they do a program like that, you ought to check out what they're doing. And so I did. And I got the idea that instead of the city doing it, maybe private enterprise could do it. And so the bicycles wouldn't be owned or, the program wouldn't be run by the city except to supervise it somehow, but private entrepreneurs. So, if your motel wanted to have some bicycles for your guests to use, you'd have the bicycles there, you'd have them sign a waiver, you'd give them a helmet to take the bicycle, they'd have to bring it back to you if it didn't come back, you'd know it, but you were running the three or five bicycles that you had. So it wouldn't be run by the city, the city would be out of it completely, it would be private enterprise that was doing it. And so I think that's probably, and maybe not even, maybe not even use the city's bicycles, forget that, you can buy bicycles inexpensively through the mercantile perhaps, new bicycles, paint them pink or green or whatever, and pursue it through a private enterprise rather than through the city, thereby solving the issues of liability and helmets and do the bicycles actually ever come back and all that. You might like some bicycles in the barber shop. But it's a big job and I'm not willing to volunteer to take it on. I got it as far as I did. As far as what the city does with its excess bicycles, what do you think, scrap them? Jump?
I guess like an auction, nothing else.
Was that?
We would auction.
Auction them, donate them to St. Vinnie's? I don't know. I don't know. Somebody said the bicycles weren't really all that good anyway. They were worth rehabbing. And when I did talk to Mackenzie Bowerman about this whole idea, it was back in the wintertime when they were slow and didn't have a whole lot of work going on and he thought maybe, you know, during their slow period they could do it. Well, they're coming into their busy time now, so it might have to wait again till next year. So that's, that's the report back on the bicycles in the community, free bicycles in the community. My strong recommendation is the city does not be involved with it.
Garry, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Does the mercantile rent bikes?
Yes, yes, they do. But these bicycles would not be in competition with the bikes that the merc rents. They wouldn't be high-end mountain bikes, they wouldn't be high-end anything bikes, they'd be flunker junkers. The only thing people could do is tool around town with them.
No, well, I agree.
And they wouldn't be worth stealing.
Yeah, I agree, but I was just thinking, because I had a situation the other day where I had a cyclist came in and he was, his bike was broken and he was wanting to go...
Well, you rent a bike, you go to the mercantile, yeah, we've had that too, but these wouldn't be of that caliber.
Who maintains them?
Pardon me?
So, would she then have to maintain them?
I don't know. You know, you'd be a wonderful person to do this project. You could answer, you could...
I've got a little holding there for the cyclist, the cyclist.
Counselor Biggerstaff, you have something to say?
I was just going to say, I'm standing at the Phoenix and Bend and they actually have a tent out front where they bunch of bicycles they rent, like 39 bucks a day for them. They're not, you know, very nice bikes. A lot of them are painted over and whatever.
Really nice to be a white.
Well, skinny's a bike, you want to tell us what kind of bikes these are too?
There's a wide variety of bikes, lots of them are just total junk, or just started and just out in the weeds for a long time. Every once in a while we did some pretty nice ones in, but I think people were stealing them Eugene, bringing them up on the bus and...
(laughing).
So there's a handful of those. And we've actually returned last week, almost a $3,000 bicycle. I just found it out on the Fish Hatch Road, the rightful owner. But it, yeah, there's going to be a lot of work to get a fleet of bicycles up and available. And I'd be glad if you guys want to come over and, you know, or somebody from the mercantile and take a look at what we really have, make an assessment. Otherwise, they're, they're brashers and they auction off.
Okay. Anybody from the mercantile want to go and tell us the bikes or anything?
Yeah, you have to see. You know, typically what I find with used bikes is that you rarely have a complete bike that's ready to ride. I can help you guys assess whether stuff should just go to the scrapyard or might be worth auctioning off or fixing up.
I appreciate it. I think we need that kind of...
We're just getting ahold of a same time. Say, hey, today sounds like a good time.
I'll take you down there. I'd like to do all the...
I'm wondering, at one point, the bikes were supposed to be powder coated and one put on each overage monument on each side of town. That was something that had been said through the chamber for, it was a, it was a burden thing. So is that still going to happen, to have a mountain bike on top of the grand overage?
Oh, you mean for a, for a logo type thing?
Yes.
I hadn't heard that.
That was actually, that was actually the rural tourism course that we were on, that was actually said that that's what they were going to do. Do you remember Ben?
All right. Thank you.
Yes. Look at the weather. I want to write that down.
If I could just make a quick comment about that, there are two people in the community who donated their own personal quality bicycles to that project of on monuments. So, that was different bicycles than the bikes that you guys have. I don't, that's all I know that they have.
As I was going, coming to the minutes, I did see some discussion of this a few years back. And I have to go back more, but I believe that a motion was made to put them up. So, it's up to this council that that's something they want to still do or not do.
The motion pass?
I believe it did.
It makes sense with our branding.
Yeah, I would kick that over to the community services. Rather than talk about it here because it's something that's already been talked about.
Thanks.
All right, moving along. Parking space closure, not disagree with the fact that parking space closure, the line Mountain Baker, really important.
Well, what we, what you have in front of you is, I think you got sketches behind that too. This Lamont from the bakery is asking to close a couple of parking spots. Now, what we're doing here is just asking for the spots because this still needs to go in front of the planning commission, okay? So basically, all she's going to ask me for at this point is, she has to be able to tell the planning commission that, yes, she's got the spot to put it on or not. And then the planning commission is the next step to see if it fits within the code or if it's something they want to give a variance to, but ultimately the final decision on this particular thing would be with the planning commission. At this point, she's just asking if you guys would allow her to use the space.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we allow Ms. Lamont to use the two parking spaces in front of the line Mountain Baker.
Moved by Counselor Coe, seconded by Counselor Biggerstaff, let Ms. Lamont use the two parking spaces in front of the line Mountain Baker.
She only had one.
She only had one. When I spoke with her, she said, did she spoke with her neighbors? Aren't you one of her neighbors on those spots?
Yeah, but I mean, the reference was says that she has two spots in front of her bakery. She doesn't have two spots in front of her bakery.
That is correct. She had one spot that had spoke with her neighbors so that she could do lines to...
And would I object to it? No.
Well, I look at, you know, as, as far as what she's saying in her letter is that it's, it's a seasonal thing. It's going to be out in spring, summer, and out in the fall, winter.
Yeah, why don't we vote on it and then we can discuss it? Was there a second? No, you discuss it after you make a motion, after you...
Oh, there is a motion.
There was one.
Motion is second. That's the way it's done, board or not. Yeah, we, okay, let's vote on it and then we'll discuss it.
Well, don't you discuss before you vote on the motion?
Yes, you do.
Yes, you do.
You got to say, I'm sorry.
You're really, you're really confusing us here.
Wake us up there, Mr. Mayor, will you?
Jeez, been a long day.
We're just going on with it, you go to the planning commission, we're not...
All right, back to discussing it.
Wes made the second.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded, my bad.
So I would say, you know, again, as, as it's a temporary thing, that I don't have a problem with that, you know? But again, it's up to the planning commission, like Wes said, we're going to submit, we're saying yes, allow it to go to the planning commission and let them review it and take a look at it and talk with the neighbors and really get some valuable feedback other than a letter from, you know, like this person.
Yes, I still have to do the binding effect for the planning commission, so...
And, you know, I'd like to hear impacts from chief as well and et cetera, but I don't see a problem with it. And again, it's temporary. I know myself, I like to, you know, work above and sit down on the patio, it's a great thing in the summertime. And it's a great place to interact with a lot of people, especially tourists.
Now, did I understand you say that the planning commission would approve this?
Yes.
Planning commission's recommending it.
Well, no, when it comes, there are some things that they do get to approve, this would be one of them, okay, because it's under the zoning, so this one, this one is theirs.
Well, don't they approve it some back to us?
Not always, no. Some things don't come back to you. For example, when we do, when the planning commission does partitions, subdivisions, those kind of things, they, they do the final order and it's done. Now, PUDs though, okay, PUDs do come back to you. Now, that has a whole different step, unlike the one that we had in there, the river, we had that, what is it, private unit development? That, those come in front of, those do come in front of you and the code is specific that PUDs do come back to the council. But most other land use issues, it's the planning commission is the final, by most of them.
I would definitely like to see us, if that's the case, I would definitely like to see us make this the fact that it is seasonal.
Right.
That it's not a permanent struggle.
That is correct, because that's why, because it's seasonal, it falls under a special use permit, which falls under the planning commission.
I was a little concerned when I first read this, obviously because I work at the other business on the other side and it only, only one day a week, obviously, and after talking with, who was Jackie Lamont, I have absolutely no problems, it's not going to impact the space in front of the vet clinic. And my only concern about that is sometimes we do have emergencies where people have injured dogs or something and we need to get them as close to the office as possible. And I've even had to go out and ask people if they would move their vehicle so we could. And it's not going to impact us at all, so I'm absolutely at fault. It's my thing. Just accommodating and enter all my...
Now we can vote.
Yes.
That's right. Go ahead, let's vote.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Shory?
Aye.
Counselor Coe?
Aye.
Counselor Basler?
Aye.
Counselor Biggerstaff?
Aye.
Counselor Slaven?
Aye.
Counselor Fortune?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to carry on. Did we ever get to make a decision on the bicycle thing? I kind of lost track there.
We didn't. You recommended that the city...
I thought it died.
My understanding is, Mr. Carl indicated that he would prefer that the city not do it and that the council, and that we have, see if I captured this, that we would have Jeff take a look at the bikes and see if they were the...
Eugene Cathcart.
Eugene Cathcart.
On your way.
He wanted to go home. I think my brain must sleep about two hours. Eugene Cathcart would take a look at the bikes and see if they're making money. And if not, we will send them down to the scrap. I'll take that off, off the list then. All right, Lee Services.
You have one more, you're on 7.2?
No, I'm sorry, be waiver.
You have the staff report in front of you, you question if you waiver for, if you want... You have the staff report in front of you, you request a be waiver for your waters parking.